Good evening. I call this September 28th, 2021 meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. This meeting is being streamed on the Town of Morrisville website. On October 1st, a video of this meeting will be uploaded to www.townofmorrisville.org/government/live-video. Our sergeant at arms this evening is Senior Officer Strickland, who has 13 years law enforcement experience, 11 years with the Town of Morrisville. She has served on the crisis intervention team and has received Officer of the Year recognition several times. Thank you for being with us this evening. For tonight's invocation, I recognize Councilmember Rao.
Thank you. Let us power heads in prayer. We come together in the all-America city of Morrisville to continue to lead this inclusive, innovative, and vibrant town, a coalition of engaged citizens united in our efforts to strengthen our community and to demonstrate to the world American democracy at its best. We pray this evening for anyone suffering from illness, for anyone who has lost a loved one from any illness, or anyone who has lost someone who has served our nation. Though there is a seat or two empty seats at the table, we pray for our brave soldiers wherever they may be. We pray for the citizens of Afghanistan and Haiti, for these nations, and for the refugee families seeking safety and security from an increasingly dire situation. As we prepare to celebrate Diwali, the festival of lights, a celebration of light over darkness, good over evil, let us be mindful that it is the light of love which resides in all of us, which will always lift us out of the darkness. Our light is not dependent on the darkness and uncertainty around us. We see this light every day in our volunteers, the first responders, healthcare providers, our soldiers, who continue to help others in our community, in our nation, in the midst of these uncertain times. This divine light which exists within each of us can enable us to become the change we seek in the world. Tonight, we are reminded of such a great light in the world, Mahatma Gandhi, whose birthday we will celebrate on October 3rd. He is a reminder that we can change the world. We can become the change we seek if we live lives of purpose and conviction. A free India, Dr. King's dream, a free South Africa, struggle for voting rights. We're all led by this light of fire that burns within each of us and signifies the hope that will always live on. I end this invocation in the words of Amanda Gorman, who spoke at President Biden's first inauguration poet laureate. "When day comes, we ask ourselves where we can find light in this never-ending shade. When day comes, we stop out of the shade of flame and unafraid. The new dawn balloons as we free it, for there is always light, if only we're brave enough to see it, if only we're brave enough to be it." We pray for light. We pray for peace. We pray for love. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All who are able, please stand and join in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the rule of our judicial justice. On behalf of the nation, I declare my vote.
Before we adopt tonight's agenda, Town Council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Does any council member have anything they'd like to share at this time? Okay. Seeing none, is there a motion in a second to adopt this evening's agenda?
I move that we adopt this evening's agenda.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries 6-0. There are six items on this evening's consent agenda: approval of three sets of August meeting minutes, a resolution to adopt the extension of COVID-19 emergency sick leave, a resolution to surplus a 2009 pumper truck, and a Town Center capital project ordinance amendment. Do any council members wish to remove any of these items for discussion before we adopt them? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion in a second to adopt the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. A motion in a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion also carries 6-0. We have two presentations tonight: a Morrisville Smart Shuttle project update and an office space needs study presentation. Caleb Allred, Planner 1, will make the first presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Caleb Allred. I'm your Transportation Planner 1. Just giving you an update on the Smart Shuttle project. So some project highlights. So this is an on-demand app-based service. So I think you should be familiar with how the service operates. But just to recap, it is you download the app or you book online and the shuttle picks you up at one of our 15 nodes around town. And then it'll take you directly to whichever other node that you've selected to go to. Again, there are 15 nodes. Some nodes have benches, trashcans, bike racks, you know, shelters. But they're at a select couple of nodes. Service is seven days a week, Monday through Friday. It's from 7:00 to 9:00. Saturdays from 8:00 to 8:00, and Sundays from 8:00 to 7:00. We've done all the app testing, completed the app. It's in stores as of last week. And service, of course, is launching October 2nd, and we hope to see you all there. And just a side note, this picture is from our Breckenridge node showing some of our amenities, the bike rack, the trashcans, and the bench. In terms of our shuttle node map, these are the locations around town that the shuttle is currently serving. The intent of this map is to show our transfer points. So we do have several Go Triangle transfers at the Regional Transit Center, Perimeter Park, Wake Tech, and both Park West Village nodes. And then we have a Go Carry transfer at both of the Park West Village nodes. And just to kind of piggyback on the Regional Transit Center node has transfers to all of our regional neighbors. So Chapel Hill, Durham, Raleigh, the airport. That's where you would catch all of those transfers. In terms of riding the shuttle, of course, just like I mentioned before, you'll book your ride, whether it be on the app or on the website or calling the phone number. What we're encouraging folks is to download the app. That way, not only can we collect the data and kind of have it for our records and for our evaluation, but we can also, folks can see real-time the status of their ride. It would probably be very helpful for their user experience. Get to the five minutes early. That is a recommendation because the shuttle will not wait forever. The drivers are instructed to wait two minutes. Of course, if they see someone running down the street and they suspect that's their ride, they might wait a little longer. But that's kind of their timeline. And of course, if you are found late or tardy one too many times, they might be, you know, someone might be, I wouldn't say banned from the app, but there might be a repercussion there. And then in terms of your trip as a whole, just give yourself plenty of time to take your trip. Of course, we don't know how many folks are going to ride the shuttle. So our hope is that, you know, obviously, we're hoping a lot of folks ride it. But because it's on-demand, because you could be picking someone up on the way, we're really hoping for folks to give yourself ample amount of time when you're first riding the shuttle, just to get familiar. Like, if you're, you know, a one-note and you want to go to a movie at Park West Village, you know, something that's time-sensitive, make sure you give yourself plenty of time there. In terms of what to look for, when you get to that node, definitely look for the node sign. That's going to be at the front of all of the nodes, all the pads. And then when the shuttle gets there, this is what our shuttle's going to look like. The driver will verify with you that it is you, in fact, who booked the ride, before you get on. So in terms of next steps, of course, staff will be monitoring the data collected through the Via app. That's one of the coolest things about the Via app is that we do get that raw data, pretty much whatever data we want from it. And we can utilize that for reporting the data, whether it be to you or whether it be to our regional partners, in which we've agreed to report that data to them for their numbers as well. And then we'll take that data and we'll take the feedback that we get from community members, and we will reevaluate the service, you know, appropriately. And speaking of reevaluating, we've actually identified one location for future kind of node construction. On Morrisville Parkway, our current node is on the westbound lane, on the north side of the road, across the street from the Morrisville Elementary School. And we've actually identified somewhere along the south side of the road to place a node based on feedback, based on, from our residents, and based on feedback from our partners, and also just general safety. We will be evaluating that after launch for a location on that. And I just want to thank our partners as well and let you know all of the work they've been doing. Via is our technology company who's working on the app for us. We're very thankful for their work on that. Go Carry is our service provider. That's where we get our shuttles and our drivers from. Go Triangle and Campo both help us with reporting and getting the funds to make this project happen. And also, just an internal thank you and credit to all of our staff here who worked very hard on this project amongst multiple departments. And with that, I'll take any questions you'll have.
And we do have some questions queued up. I'll recognize Councilmember Robotti, followed by Councilmember Garamella, then Councilmember Rao, then Mayor Protem.
Hi. Can you tell me what types of educational materials are available to help people use the app?
That's a great question. So we do have, our service website has FAQs that folks can click on. We've tried to identify, like, what are the main questions folks would have. We are going to a lot of town events to try to circulate paper information. We've sent postcards to folks, really pushing out, directing them to the website. And we also have a Smart Shuttle email. It's smartshuttle@townofmorrisville.org, in which we will be answering any questions folks have about the service. The one thing I will also mention is that we are kind of going to come out with a video of how to ride the service. Something that's very important to us is making sure folks are comfortable using that service. And we found that probably the most appropriate way is just to have a walkthrough of how exactly you're going to do it. So not only does it go through the app and how to book a ride on the app, but it also goes through what your user, like, what is your experience going to be when you get on? So that's kind of what we're going for with that. As of right now, we actually have a launch video that y'all are welcome to view on our system, or our Smart Shuttle website. But that how-to ride video will be coming up shortly.
Okay. I would encourage you to consider breaking out a couple of short videos just on how to use the specific app experience. Just because if, I'm thinking that a lot of our riders may be senior citizens, and it would be good to have a, you know, to have a book-a-ride video that just takes you through those steps that you need to go through to book a ride. You know, just a short video, and maybe also some written instructions.
Absolutely. So that how-to video will cover how to book a ride. But of course, the written instructions will definitely work on getting those up as well. Thank you. That's great feedback.
Councilmember Garamella, please.
Hey, thanks, Caleb. And I know it's a long way that we've been working, and good, it's a reality, you know, coming soon. One of the questions that was asked to me was, what's the age limit of, you know, getting a ride? Everyone has cell phones. Even a middle schooler has a cellphone these days. And if they have an app, can they ride? Or are you restricting a certain age below? Or what is the, you have, we have a policy?
That's a great question. So we're actually following Go Carry's guidance and their policy regarding, you know, age of riders. And their policy is that if you are 13 or older, you can ride by yourself. If you are under 13, you must be accompanied by someone who is at least 16. So 13 or older, you're fine. Otherwise, 16 or older with you.
Okay. Excellent. And so this is an app, right? I go to Breckenridge and I basically ask for a ride to go to Kids Creek. And will it give me at that time how much time it'll take me to go from Breckenridge to Kids Creek? Or the timing will keep changing based on how many riderships it comes in the middle? Because if it is 5, 10 minutes between, I'm fine. Once I get in and, like, you know, the demand comes in, it takes 40 minutes or 30 minutes to go, I don't want to go, you know? So how do I determine? How do you determine the algorithm, you know? Just because I would not know till I book, will I know at that time how much time it's going to take me to my destination?
Right. That's a great question. I think it's probably most appropriate to address your question in the three different ways that you can book a ride. So for the app, you would be given real-time updates on the app even as you're on the shuttle. What it does is it will actually show the shuttle on a map coming to you with the directions. It'll also say, you know, the shuttle is arriving in five minutes, you know, such and such. And then when you get on the shuttle, it will also tell you how long it will take to get to Kids Creek in that example. But what I will say is that that time could expand if it does indeed have to pick someone up on the way. So that's kind of why we're encouraging folks to give yourself a little bit more time the first couple of times you use it, just to make sure that you aren't late wherever you're getting to. If you book on the website, it does the same thing where it gives you those updates. But unfortunately, you know, you wouldn't be able to check that when you're on the shuttle. And then also, when you book over the phone, the call center folks are booking it from the website, so they can give you an estimate. But unfortunately, you would have to call back to get those updates when, you know, in transit.
So from what I understand is, after I get in, the time is going to change based on who is, you know, the next rider is if it is on the way, right? So because that's the thing, I'm not very clear. I asked the question to Benjamin last time, and he said the apps are getting tested at the time. But if I don't know, if I don't get an ETA that I will go from point A to point B in like 15 minutes, that usually takes. And then after I go in, I'm stuck. It's 20 minutes, 25 minutes. Then it's frustrating to the rider because he's not getting, he could have taken an alternate way to go, right? So how can we ensure, like, we have some kind of sanity, you know? I know, like, the ridership is increasing. The idea is to pick as many people on the way, but at the same time, not expand. Is there a certain criteria that goes into your algorithm?
So I can't speak specifically on how the algorithm is calculated. What I can say is that in the event that we have a high ridership, we would want to reevaluate for the same reasons that you're bringing up of, you know, we want to make sure that folks have a good experience and that they're getting places in the amount of time they want to. So at that point, if we do find that to become a trend, we will certainly evaluate probably how many shuttles we have on the road. Of course, the more shuttles you have, you know, the less folks each shuttle has to pick up on route to wherever they're going.
And one other question I got asked was, does this have a bike rack for people to come by and then take it to go from point A to point B?
Yeah, that's a great question. I am excited to tell you all that there are going to be bike racks on both shuttles. Each shuttle has two places to put a bike. One of the how-tos is going to be how to use that bike rack. So folks are comfortable, you know, putting that bike on the bike rack and using that part of the service.
And it's also ADA compatible? Like, for anyone with disability, the ramp will be there or something like where you can help them to get in?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. My last question is, RDU, right? Like, you know, it's so close by. And if we can add that as an additional node, it only helps to add the ridership. Because to go up and down, it's, I think there's a stop at the outlet mall. I don't know if there is one. But if you just go a mile down, you'll get a lot of ridership. But because it services only Morrisville and the airport. So to have that connection is a big feature because there are a lot of travelers who go up and down. And it would be good to basically do that. That's just like a thought.
Yeah. Thank you. I appreciate that feedback. It's certainly something that, that is something I'm finding to be a recurring thing that folks are telling me. What I've been letting folks know in the meantime is that, you know, there is a Go Triangle transfer to get to the airport by way of the Regional Transit Center. But that is something that I've noted as a common theme that folks really want to be able to get directly to the airport.
Exactly. Why would I go point B when I have a plane to catch?
Right, right. Yeah, thank you.
That's all my questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Rao, please.
Caleb, thank you. You might have already gone through this, but what is the process of, after we do this initial phase, for people wanting to make recommendations of new nodes? I've already been approached about some areas around Church Street, which I think there's some senior communities out there, and they really would like to have a node near there. Is that an option? What would be, if they're listening tonight, what would be the process?
I apologize, councilmember. Did you say Church Street?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there already a node out there or no?
There is not a node on Church Street. If you're talking about north, I guess the closest one would either be in Providence Place or Kids Creek, so you'd have to go into the neighborhood. But the process for kind of giving that feedback would be, what I've encouraged folks is to send us an email, on the Smart Shuttle email, so that we can organize that feedback and bring it to the table when it's time to evaluate future node locations. That way, we can have it in writing.
Okay. I'll convey that to them. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Johnson, please.
So Caleb, the video that you all have out there now is very well done. So thank you for that. And it does show some of the features of the ADA accessibility and the bike rack. So it's very well done. So thank you all for doing that.
Thank you.
You said something about, and I want to make sure I understand I'm clear on this, that you need to make a reservation in order to get on the shuttle. Can you, if you just happen to be coming by a node, can you hop on the shuttle?
So that's a great question. So you would need to book the ride in advance. The driver does verify that that's you that's getting on the shuttle when you book that ride, just to kind of ensure that the passengers are the appropriate passengers. And a lot of that has to do with, you know, the fact that the way times can vary and stuff like that. We want to make sure that the folks that are on are the folks that are on. What I would say in that event, if you are walking by and you're like, "I'm going to hop on the shuttle today." So we do have the QR code on the sign. So folks can download the app from the sign. What the QR code does is it sends you to our website, excuse me, and our app will be a link in the website to download from the appropriate app store. If you otherwise could not download that app, there is the phone number for the operating center where you can call and book that ride. In addition, I think probably sometime in the next couple of weeks, we're going to have signs up at the node explaining that in detail, recognizing that it might not be as obvious to some folks. So we want to make sure. My concern is that on days not as beautiful as today, someone might be standing out there and get very hot, or, you know, it might be raining, and that's, I just don't want that to happen.
Okay. Okay. So reservation is required.
Exactly.
Okay. Good. Okay. Just as long as we're really clear on that. I want to, and then the additional stop on Morrisville Parkway that you're all thinking about across the street from the current node, and this would be on the Morrisville Elementary School side, did you say that will be possible from day one? Or you're evaluating that and going to add it in the future?
It would be the latter. So with, right now, our big push is launch. After launch, we've, you know, gotten the feedback from many different places and safety and things like that of recognizing that's the next push. So we will be evaluating where in that kind of corridor on that side of the road is appropriate for that node.
Okay. And so this goes then to the comments you've already heard about, because I've heard them too, about folks that are asking for nodes in additional locations, which is good because that tells me that there is interest and that people want to make sure it's as convenient as possible. So that's good. So tell me when, what kind of timeframe are we thinking about for evaluating the next phase of nodes we might add into the system? So we can, you know, give folks some kind of guidance there.
Yeah. So we don't have a specific timeline right now in terms of like an end date. But it is something that we have on our list of kind of, that particular area around town are kind of our first steps of this is the one that we know that we need immediately. You know, kind of off into the future, where our hope is to evaluate the data, get a lot more of that feedback from our community. And that way, we can place some more of those nodes around. So unfortunately, I don't have a strict timeline for you, but it is something that is, I would say, an immediate thing that we're looking into.
Okay. Well, that's fair. And I guess the more emails you get from folks requesting additional locations will probably help in that process of looking at the next phase of nodes. Would that be fair to say too?
That is absolutely fair.
Okay. Because I will encourage folks that I've talked to then to do that. And I may do that too on their behalf. So, because I've thought of a couple of locations that might be really important.
Yeah. That sounds fantastic. The more emails, the better. That means that folks are interested. So I'm very much looking forward to it.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate you helping us get to this point very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Very much appreciated.
Councilmember Fender?
Yeah. Building off of what Mayor Protem was talking about, the potential node that will be on the other side of Morrisville Parkway, well, is there potential that it will be closer to the Aquatics Center?
I will say that decision has not been finalized. We do recognize, and we've gotten folks that have mentioned the Aquatics Center as a point of interest. So it's something certainly we will have conversations about. Unfortunately, I don't quite know where that's going to be located right now.
But you're looking in that area between the elementary school and the Aquatics and Fitness Center?
Yes. I would say that's probably an accurate assessment.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd also share that it does take a couple of minutes to download the app and get your password and everything set up. So try to do it in advance if you can. It's really easy to get it off the website. And just in our longer-term planning and vision, this is a first step. And if we have certain routes and certain nodes that are very popular, eventually, this might become a fixed route, hybrid, something like that. So we really appreciate the first step towards having more transportation mobility options. So as has been mentioned, this is a work in progress. So thank you very much. Very much looking forward to Saturday.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Moving on to item 9B. It's Mark Spanioli, P Director of Engineering, will make the next presentation about office space needs study.
How do I get to it, Eric? Good evening again, councilmembers, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Mark Spanioli, Town Engineer here. We're going to spend a few minutes talking about some of the office space needs that the staff has here in Morrisville. We put a brief presentation together just to give you a general idea of what's happening and where we want to go in the future. So just to give you a little background, some of our departments are pretty tight on space. Currently, we have town departments that are lacking in office space. We studied space needs and requirements for fire administration, police, engineering, and the Parks Department Administration. We hired ADW architects to help us evaluate our needs and provide different options. And we also reviewed our available space at our PSMS building, Old Fire Station Number 1, the Pew House, and even the lease space we have right now with the Parks Department. So just to give reference on a mapping perspective, currently, we co-locate fire administration, police, and engineering are in the PSMS building along with the planning department. We have an off-site lease space where the Parks and Recreation Administration is housed at 991 Aviation Parkway. So I want to talk a little bit about the space that we do have that's unoccupied right now. As you all know, Old Fire Station 1 is an unoccupied building and property that the town owns. This property or the building itself provides a total of 6,800 square feet in various components of office space, apparatus bay, and some storage upstairs. We've taken a look at it, and we've determined that we could do some minor renovations to allow some office occupancy. allow some office occupancy in the neighborhood of about $100,000. That would entail some interior renovations, as well as some site work to make it a usable space. We are concerned about long-term parking. The, the parking that would be available right now is on the railroad right away, adjacent to the old fire station, but we do have an agreement to use that space for, for that purpose. As you can see in the picture, the two parcels there circled in red, those are both town-owned. We are also looking at long-term redevelopment options for the property. So whatever we do here would be more of a temporary occupancy if we were to move into the space. We're also considering the possibility of even closing Page Street and merging those two properties as one larger parcel to make it more, you know, a better appetite for redevelopment there, whether we keep it or we sell it or whatever, whatever we plan to do with it. We also took another look at the Pew House. I know that over, over the years, we've looked at it for various ideas, and we're still bouncing some of those ideas around. The cost to retrofit it into some kind of office space would be in the neighborhood of $600,000. That estimate was prepared in 2019. Other options are obviously available to, for reuse of that property. It doesn't have to be for office space. And theoretically, based on the study we did, it really couldn't accommodate any, any of our departments, based on the size of, of the square footage that's available. So we kind of determined at this point that it really wouldn't be advantageous for us to try to move into the space for office staff purposes. And also, parking has, is a real concern to us because there isn't any parking on that property or, or immediately adjacent to the property. So together with the architecture firm, we, we studied and prepared recommendations that we think are appropriate for us. We think that the best-case scenario would be to relocate fire administration from the PSMS building to the old fire station with those minor renovations. Based on the office requirements, it seems best that Parks Administration would stay in their leased space. Engineering, our group, would move into the vacated fire administration space within the PSMS building. Police would expand into our vacated space where engineering wants, or is now. And again, I, I just want to mention, the Pew House just wasn't, wasn't large enough to accommodate any of our, our department needs. And just for a quick overview for Fire Station One, we do have a site plan we've already created that, that will work for the minor renovations. And we, we can do these minor renovations to the interior and to the site to accommodate fire administration as an office use for the building. So let's talk about phasing. We actually developed what we think is three phases, kind of a short term, a midterm, and a long term for the, for the entire office staff needs, office space needs. So our near term is the consideration of $100,000 estimated right now to renovate the old Fire Station One and to move fire admin, as I mentioned earlier, into Fire Station One, and do some rearrangements within the PM, PSMS building, so that police and fire could, I mean, police and engineering could use the space on a, on a, on a short-term basis. Without any major modification or renovation, we would just occupy and move some people around within the existing office layout and cubicle spaces. Now, Phase Two are more of a midterm, which, which we haven't determined a timeframe for this at this point. We would do some major renovations to the PSMS building to fully accommodate the police expansion into the vacated engineering space, and also to, for them to move into some additional space in the training room we have adjacent to the planning department break room. And, and the fire administration space that they have vacated, or they would vacate, it would be renovated to fully accommodate the engineering And Phase Three for us, again, we haven't really put a timeframe to Phase Three, but we want to consider bringing all the administration staff onto the same campus, so that way, long-term fire administration and Parks Administration can be together with the rest of the town departments. We don't have that space currently, so there would have to be some kind of either building additions or new buildings built on the campus. You know, if, if for some reason the Chamber of Commerce building became available, maybe that could be considered as town offices as well. And we see that long-term, certainly, the old Fire Station property should be repurposed for some other use. So our next steps, we would like to initiate Phase One and allocate funding to renovate Fire Station One, to move fire administration staff into that, the office space. We, we could do that with our own staff. We can hire the contractors and everything needed. We prepare the design work and permit all ourselves, and we get that work done. We'd go ahead and relocate the administration staff over there, and then we do the shifting around of engineering and police to use the existing space that's available today. And that's, that all can be accomplished between now and the spring of 2022. So. Not if anybody has any questions.
Councilmember Garamella, please.
Mark, my question is, when I look at it, it's a continuous jigsaw puzzle. Move this, get in this, and like, you know, kind of accommodating. I think more for Mark than like, we need to have a full comprehensive plan. We may have to, you know, take one of the buildings and go vertical, because it's $100,000 now, have, you know, almost close to a million in the next phase, you know. Have you even looked at, like, where we have the police department, like, you know, to go up and vertical, because having one story, it is not effective anymore?
Excuse me. This study did not incorporate that, because I believe we've been told that vertical options are not possible on our buildings, but we can reconfirm that.
Yeah, because I, I feel at some point, it's better to go that route, or, you know, demolish, or at least go vertical and have a, a big footprint, or even lease the space for office use for the downtown that we are trying to make, so that that is more consolidated in one place then.
And I believe as Town Council has discussed, Town Center and the discussion of a municipal building really was related to the fact that we, we've known this train ha-ha has been heading our way.
So, so when do we come to that point where, you know, too much of shuffling now, we need to do something? Because $100,000, not a big deal, yes, you know, I'm sure everyone will approve it, but it just adds up, and then we're not getting a full value of it.
I mean, I would say we, we certainly, when we did this study, I think our, our goal was, was really the short term for right now, just to try to get the, the staffing needs managed at this point. I think certainly we could, we could gear up for our second phase to do more of the things you're talking about than, as an option in lieu of doing maybe the million dollars at, you know, PSMS building. So those are things that we could talk about in more detail.
Councilmember Robati, followed by myself.
So I kind of disagree, Satish, that $100,000 isn't a big deal. Do we have $100,000 extra? Just, I mean, where would the money come from?
So you would have to decide on where to incorporate the money from, or like, you're just, you're talking about utilization of your reserves. You're talking about a comprehensive location. That's something different that would require additional conversation through your cap on this, I mean, to our budget cycle, and could incorporate either ways of text.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, $100,000 is not small change, but I think that's probably an interim step that may be necessary. We'll have more discussions about that. And I guess that'd be coming as a briefing item sometime fairly soon, or would that be just an approval?
Yes. The, the concept right now is we're trying to get our estimates in from contractors, our bids, and that way, we can come back with something.
And in regards to the nearly million for the other renovations, I'd be a lot more interested in acquiring land and building a building and putting it into investment rather than renovating an interior space, which doesn't really add so much value in the long term. It's sort of moving the deck chairs around. So that would be my hope as we move forward, to really assess that as an option. That's my thoughts, or questions, or comments. Councilmember Rao, please.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment that I really like this idea. I've been thinking about this for a while, eventually having a larger municipal building where all the departments can work with each other. And I know that's something we can't do now, but I definitely think as part of our Town Center Plan, we should consider that, because just, you know, just having like engineering, planning, all of the major administrative divisions in one building from a meeting, you know, efficiency, though right now, it's just, you know, we can only go this way so far as, as we grow as a town. So I'm not saying anything that the management doesn't already know, but I think it's something definitely that, you know, we need to start thinking about, rather than just coming up with solutions that are short, you know, maybe long-term, but still not really giving us a long-term solution, so.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Thank you, Mark. Just a, a couple of, a couple of comments. I'm, I'm actually surprised that the old Fire Station is only gonna cost $100,000 to renovate. It's been a number of years since I've been in that building, but, and I trust you on that, I trust you on that. But, and it's an immediate need. I, I get that. So we've, we've got to do something. We also have an audit that we should be getting results from probably in October. And so the audit will show us how much money we have. And typically, our audits come back very favorable. So I'm, I'm anticipating that as well. And that's when we typically take a look at all those projects we haven't been able to fund and maybe think about funding them. So this might fall into that whole, whole mix in October. So I'm looking forward to that information. And then the only other comment is about the goal, this goal of bringing everybody back into the Town Hall campus. You know, Parks and Recs is way out there, and I know this is not a big town, but in, in, you know, relatively speaking, they're, they're way out there from everyone else. So I, I know that was always supposed to be a temporary location. So the sooner we can figure out a way to bring them all back, you know, into the Town Hall campus area or somewhere closer, would, would, I think it would be a, a good goal to have. So, yeah, I think that, yeah, obviously, there's a need, obviously. So, thank you for
Thank you.
bringing the report forward.
Okay. Everyone who wanted to speak the first term round has had a chance. I'll recognize Councilmember Robati.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, how long do you think this, like, how, how much time does this $100,000 buy us? Is it in enough time that we could look at a, a potential Town Center solution, or is it, is this just to get us through the next year? Or like, what kind of timeframe do you think?
That's a good question. And I think, based on how we're moving with the Town Center, I think, I think we, it buys us enough time to look at the other options and doesn't, we don't, it won't be a year. We can, we can stay there a little longer. We're trying to do enough renovations to it so that it, it can keep us there in a relatively comfortable fashion until we can make some other decisions.
Councilmember Garamella, please.
I'm okay. I'll approve as long as you can give me a video of Lewinsky and Scott, you know, getting kicked out of that building.
They love that. They love Old Fire Station One. They have fantastic memories there as firefighters, so they're, they're ready to go.
All right. Okay. So you want to share any next steps, as you sort of did, just summarizing?
Well, we can, when we get our, our bids in, we'll come in for an, you know, an allocation request for funding, and we'll take it from there.
Okay. Thank you very much for the report. A lot of hard work went into assessing where we're at, and where we're heading in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
You're now at item 10, Public Address. I'd like to recognize, I'd like to recognize Town Clerk Smith as anyone signed up to speak in person.
Yes, sir. We do have one individual signed up to speak in person, Nicole Riechini.
Okay. If you could please state your name, address, and your role, and you have three minutes.
Do you mind if I pull this down while I speak?
I believe that would be fine.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay. Awesome. Nicole, I work at Clean Juice Park West. What else was I supposed to say?
Your home address or home city?
Oh, Raleigh, North Carolina. All right. Good evening, Council. My name is Nicole Riechini, and I've worked in Morrisville for the last four years. I'm here to speak against the mask mandate, more importantly, with the recent push for mandate in the COVID-19 vaccine. Three minutes isn't long enough, so I'll be following up with an email, which will include our lab, lab results that parents did with their child's used mask, and all the germs that came back from the lab that the children are inhaling all day long. It's awful, and the mask mandate is causing them to breathe in all these germs. And those who are pushing the mask mandate should be held responsible for these children getting sick. The mask mandate is causing division, hate, despite what you may believe health issues. In addition, it's leading to the suffering of small businesses. How can you say you know what's best for every individual when it comes to someone's health? Of course, things like eating less processed food, exercising, getting vitamin D, staying hydrated, but we are not mandating these things that will actually improve our health. Instead, we are forcing people to wear a mask all day, including when we exercise indoors. When has it ever been okay to restrict your breathing, which is what we're doing? I had an asthma attack last spring while exercising indoors and wearing a mask, and then working seven to eight hours a day in a very active job. Dr. Margaret Grease-Brynson, M.D., Ph.D., is a neurologist, and this is what she has to say about the mask. We know that the human brain is very sensitive to oxygen. There are nerve cells, for example, in the hippocampus that can't be longer than three minutes without oxygen. They cannot survive. The warning symptoms are headaches, drowsiness, dizziness, issues in concentration, slowing down of reaction times, reaction of the cognitive system. She believes wearing a mask is causing lack of oxygen to the brain. I can attest this. I have headaches even only after wearing a mask for a few minutes, and I've had more sickness ever in my life by wearing the mask. Question for all of you. Are you wearing a mask eight hours a day without taking it off while trying to catch your breath while also breaking a sweat at your job? The answer is no. Most people who are in agreement with the mask mandate put it on to run into a store real fast and then are taking it off, or they have believed the fear that the media has pushed so hard. I understand people have died, good people, people who should still be with us, and I'm deeply heartbroken about that. I know people who've had, taken the vaccine and have major problems, and people have died from the vaccine too. This vaccine and mask mandate has killed and harmed more people than ever before as well. And by complying, you're saying these deaths are okay. And with anything that contains a risk, there should be a choice. This includes the vaccine and wearing the mask. Some numbers from OpenVayers.com updated on 9/17. 726,963 cases of COVID vaccine adverse effects. 15,386 COVID vaccine-reported deaths. These are huge risks. I know people who are struggling mentally, emotionally, and physically due to wearing the mask. Think of the death community who rely on lip reading. I have a few guests that I serve every day at my job. Nurses and doctors all over the country are quitting or being fired because they refuse to get the vaccine. Why? Why would someone who wants to work in this field be willing to lose their job because they don't want to take a vaccine that will save our country? Thank you for your time. I pray that you really think deeply about why you're forcing the mask mandate and eventually the vaccine mandate. Is this something you truly believe in? Are you driven more by political agendas and actions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Was there anyone else signed up? Town Clerk Smith?
No, sir, there is not.
Okay. Is there anyone here in the room who wishes to speak who didn't sign up? Okay, sir, if you can please approach the microphone. You'll have three minutes. Your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Town Council. I'm Jim Simmons. I live across the street from Morrisville Elementary School. And this is such a great town. We've been here now for a couple of months, and I'm quite engaged by all the members of the council. I'm disappointed I can't quite hear you. I hear the Town Manager very well when she leans into the microphone, but with the acoustics, the distance from the mics and the masks, it muffles your voices. And I'd really like to see if we could figure out a way to maybe help me out a little bit so I can hear you better. Thank you very much.
Okay, we will endeavor to be a little louder. Were there any emailed comments?
No, sir, there were no email comments received.
Okay. Thank you very much. We're now moving on to item 11, action items. There are two action items on tonight's agenda. Consideration of UDO text amendments and a memorandum of understanding with SING Development for the Town Center Core Demonstration Project. Chris Lawson, Planning Manager, will facilitate the first item.
All right. Good evening, Council. So the last meeting, I covered four proposed UDO text amendments, two of which were required by general statutes and two of which are discretionary. I'd be happy to cover them again or answer any questions tonight. And then I believe you left the public hearing open, and after that, staff has scheduled action for tonight.
Okay. Is there anyone signed up for the public hearing?
No, sir, there is not.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing then.
Make a motion to close the public Make a motion to close the public hearing? Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries six zero. The public hearing is closed. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Lawson? Okay. At that point, we have a motion at our table, I believe. I'd entertain a, is there a motion in second to adopt the proposed text amendments?
After consideration of the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board and the goals of the comprehensive plan, I find that the proposed text amendments are consistent with the comprehensive plan, are in, and are in the public's interest because they will bring the UDO into compliance with the North Carolina general statutes and will benefit the community. I hereby make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-334-0 approving text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance related to amending minimum parking standards for emergency service uses, limitations on submission of a development application post-forestry activity, pedestrian access and circulation, and post-decision action and limitations. This UDO amendment 21-0006.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. That carries six zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Lawson. A lot of work went into that.
Thank you.
Brandon Zudema, Assistant Town Manager, will facilitate the next item. Town Clerk Smith, can you fix the clock when you get a chance? Thank you, sir.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. Coming back to you tonight in regards to a memorandum of understanding for the demonstration project associated with Phase One of the Town Center Core. Up on your screen is the image that Sing, your proposed development partner, has provided for what the concept will look like for that Phase One development. I would also mention that both Avi and Money are here tonight. If you have any questions for them, they're happy to answer. I don't have a presentation for you per se. We provided you with a copy of the MOU last meeting two weeks ago. So that is also in your packet tonight. Happy to take any questions that you have on that, or again, any questions for the Sing group, they can certainly answer as well. And then if not, we would ask you to consider adoption of the resolution associated with this agreement.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Did anyone want to mission, make any comments? This has been a very exciting process. I think we might want to say a few words. Councilmember Rowe?
Yeah, I just want to thank, I want to thank the staff and the council for all of their work to get us to this point. I definitely want to thank Sing Development for being very proactive. And I just hope moving forward that we can continue to have a process where we can communicate our vision, and I know we'll be setting that up, and hopefully some kind of an expedited process, whether that's through work sessions and things like that, or directing stuff through staff. But I cannot believe we've come this far. It's really exciting, and we're really, really looking forward to seeing this move forward, one way or the other. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor Pretem Johnson?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion.
Okay, make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-363 of the Morrisville Town Council approving a memorandum of understanding with Sing Development LLC for the Town Center Core Demonstration Project.
Second. I have a motion and a second by Councilmember Garamella. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries six zero unanimously. Thank you very much. Next step, sir?
Yes, sir. So thank you for that. Also, thank you on behalf of Avi and Money with Sing. We are already meeting and working on this, so we didn't, we didn't wait for tonight, to be honest. We've had some conversations to get moving. So going forward, we are, and we would be, myself and the Sing Group and Eric Thomas from DFI, and then others on an as-needed basis, will be meeting at least bi-weekly to continue our conversations and to lay out that map for coming up with a development plan. I would anticipate our next time before you, unless anything changes, would likely be the second November meeting. Just to sort of give you an update on where we are, don't, don't anticipate being ready to have any meaningful conversation, but again, I want to just come back to you with what the framework is looking like. And then ideally, come back to you in either late January or early February, either at a meeting or even potentially at a retreat, to have some follow-up conversation and to introduce you to the full development plan and to begin to get questions and feedback on that. And then again, once that is complete within the 180-day window, that clock starts tonight, we will then have 90 days to complete the Development Services Agreement that'll get into more of the actual details of what we're going to do and what we're collaboratively going to create in the town center. And then from there, we begin to move towards permitting and design of the project. And so we're hoping to see that moving by next summer, and then we'll, we'll continue to go forward from there.
Okay. I'd be very interested if there was any options to use any of the parcels of land that we already have in advance of next summer. So that maybe is a discussion retreat time or something like that.
We can certainly have that conversation. We need to finalize what the development plan will look like as far as at least a final concept before we could consider doing anything with the properties that might interfere with that. And then once we know what that looks like, that could certainly be considered at that time. But again, we're hoping to move pretty quickly from that final concept through the Development Services Agreement into permitting and construction.
Yep. Some temporary interim like we did with pop-ups would be great. Okay, excellent. So that's a big step tonight. So thank you all, and from fellow council members and staff. Great job getting us to this point. Thank you, sir.
So the last thing, if I could, mayor, share with you, we are preparing a public release. You know, we want to share this good news with the community and begin to give them some more information, refresh them on where we've been, where we are, and where we're going. So we anticipate having that ready in the next day or two. Our intent would be to send that to each of you to take a look at and review, answer any questions you may have. You will also see when you receive that, there will be some opportunity for council member quotes to be included in that regarding different sections of that. So we would certainly invite you to offer any quotes you may have, and then we'll, we may have to pick and choose among those. We only have so much space in this, but we think that's an important component as well. And of course, that's also being reviewed by Sing and DFI and by our communications team, and then we hope to have that out next week.
Okay. Would you rather we wait for that to go out and amplify it, or can we share some good news on our own before then?
I mean, you can certainly share information now if you'd like to. We're going to treat that as sort of our official town release that will hopefully include some quotes from you and also information from us and Sing and DFI, and it'll sort of tell the story of where we are with the project.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, and thank you for the partnership.
Thank you.
We are now at item 12, future meetings, events, and citizen involvement opportunities. We have lots of great activity in the near future here in Morrisville. On Thursday, September 30th, this year's East Meets West Festival begins with a tailgate kickoff at Wake Competition Center. It will be fully outdoors with music, dancing, singing, and food will be available. That's from 6:00 PM till 8:00 PM this Thursday. On Friday, October 1st, from 6:00 PM until 8:00 PM, there will be Indian music at our Healthy Food Hub on Town Hall Drive. As we spoke about earlier, the Smart Shuttle begins operations Saturday at 8:00 AM. And I have downloaded the app to my phone. I encourage everyone to follow our social media and download it as well. And you all heard the info from Mr. Allred earlier. Also, this Saturday from 10:00 AM until 2:00 PM is our Fire Safety Day at the Target Parking Lot at Park West Village. WesternRegionFoodSecurity.com will be distributing free meals and produce boxes at Morrisville Elementary School from 11:30 until 1:00 PM on Saturday. Western Wake Farmers Market is open every Saturday from 8:00 AM until noon. Very exciting. Tuesday, October 5th, is our National Night Out. Our police department will be visiting various neighborhoods around town. National Night Out is designed to heighten crime and drug prevention awareness, generate support and participation in crime efforts, strengthen neighborhood spirit and police-community relations, and send the message that we are all working together to prevent crime and keep our neighborhoods safe. So the neighborhoods that are participating is Providence Place, Kets Creek, Savannah, Town Hall North, Rosati's Parking Lot, and Prowley Ridge Mont. On Friday, October 8th, we have our next movie in the park at Morrisville Community Park as part of the East Meets West 10 Days of Culture. The movie is English v English, and will be shown from 8:00 PM until 10:00 PM. Monday, October 11th, is the first day of our fifth, of our five-day bi-annual, sorry, bi-annual curbside bulk item pickup. See our Public Works page for more details of what is and is not accepted on your regular trash pickup day. Also, I almost skipped over, we have cricket national championships this weekend at Church Street Park, 11:00 AM and 2:30 on Saturday are the semifinals, 2:00 PM on Sunday. And final thing for tonight, please save the date for our Trick or Treat the Trail, this year on Saturday, October 23rd, starting at 3:00 PM at Morrisville Community Park. That is always a really fun event. For a full listing of events, please see the town calendar at www.townofmorrisville.org. At this time, I'd like to recognize council members for their comments. I'll begin with Mayor Pretem Johnson.
So first, I want to thank council for their attendance at the council stewardship event last weekend. We, council is part of our town stewardship program, and we were able to do a litter sweep. So I want to thank everybody who was able to attend. And for those in the community who would like to sign up, I think there is opportunity for you and your group, whoever that is, whether it is your neighborhood, or your church, or whatever group you belong to, just a group of friends to sign up as a part of our stewardship program. So thank you all for that. And I do want to give a shout out to staff for their live bond Q&amp;A event that you put on the other day. That was very unique. I think that's the first time we've done anything like that, where it was not a Facebook live event. It wasn't a kind of a virtual event. Well, it was a virtual event, but it was actually an online where you could ask questions, and then staff answered your questions as quickly as possible. In some cases, they had to look up some information, make sure you were sharing accurate information. But that was very well done. That was very unique. And I'm just curious if we are planning on doing any more events like that or other events to inform the public of the bond.
Yes, ma'am. Since we had several people immediately jump on and ask questions, that was just a really great sign to encourage people to go there and utilize this platform and this unique opportunity for a different type of two-way virtual conversation and get good factual information. We're going to try this again with the bond subject. We are actually exploring even other topics to do the same thing with and try to help people know how to use this, both internally and externally, and draw people to it. And we feel like when we publicize some time periods, when we're on, we're watching, that that'll just start pulling people in and generate, we hope, some more usage of this new platform that we have out there. So it was fun, entertaining, and, and we got some great questions, I thought, and couldn't have done it without the subject matter experts, the project managers that were with us that afternoon, or that morning. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeanne. I appreciate it. And I also want to thank our speakers tonight for your public comments. Appreciate your feedback and opportunity to hear your thoughts. So, thank you.
Councilmember Garamella?
I have no comments.
Okay. I just wanted to thank police and fire rescue for doing Coffee with a Cop and Firefighter this morning. Meeting people in the community where they are, I think, is very important, and I like how we're being really intentional about that. Councilmember Robati?
No comments, mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Fender?
I just want to second the stewardship program. I highly recommend getting involved in that. And you can find more information on our website at the park, under the Parks and Rec information. It's just a great way of being outside and being, you know, socializing with your friends and picking up litter, which really isn't that bad, you know? It's not, it's not as terrible as it sounds. So highly recommend that for people. That's all.
Councilmember Rowe?
Thank you. I have a couple of comments. Just a couple of things I wanted to just let the staff know. You don't have to respond. I just, I got some complaints about some trash at the waste transfer station, being dropped by trucks. I haven't had a chance to look at it. I'll try to get more details and have you all emailed. I also got a question about whether we would ever have the positivity rate of COVID in Morrisville. We get state numbers. So I know Raleigh had talked about if their numbers went below 5%, they wouldn't have a mask mandate anymore. I just don't know whether that's something that, data that we have. I want to thank Breckenridge and Councilmember Garamella for hosting the Booster Shot Clinic on Sunday. And today is National Voter Registration Day, and I just want to remind everyone to register to vote. If you're a new citizen to the country or you just moved here October 8th, you can go to DMV to vote. We've got very important elections coming up. I want to thank Radio Nira for sponsoring, one of the premier sponsors of the East Meets West Festival. For those listening, it's the, one of the largest North American, South Asian radio stations. Very exciting. And the final two things, we had a great turnout at the Startup Summit. Had about 100 people at Frontier, all masked up, social distance. Very exciting, this kind of, see this kind of energy with startups. So I look forward to continuing to work with our business community and our, hopefully bring back cultivation with the chamber, but hoping we can get some updates about our business recovery efforts and the things that we can do with the ARP money to help small businesses. Final thing, I'm wearing my Cardinal shirt today. I just want to thank and congratulate. Looking forward to great finals. Want to thank Proven Chakaraj, Chan Yard, all of the sponsors, former mayor Stoman, and all of the volunteers for all their work on a game-changing season, having professional cricket. And I think all of us were so excited. We've had so many other elected officials from the county, Chair Calabria, county commissioners, everybody. And so I think the future is bright. Hope, you know, we were looking forward to cheering them on to a championship, but we know that they'll be back. And just want to congratulate everybody on doing such a great job. And that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you all. Town Manager Page, anything from staff?
Yes, sir. I'll defer to Brandon.
Mayor, just an update in regards to temporary disc golf. Our staff has continued to work on that. We have heard your feedback. We've heard the community's feedback to try to continue that pop-up concept or the temporary disc golf. So received information today that we do have a plan in place to do some additional temporary disc golf in the future. The first is called Puttin' Around Town, P-U-T-T-I-N, Puttin' Around Town. So in order to keep sort of the interest going, we are going to post a single disc golf basket at a set of parks over time. And this will all go out on our website and on social media so that folks can just come up and try it from time to time and see what it's like and see if they enjoy it. And that'll be sort of for the fall. So we'll do that twice in October. For about half of the first part of October, we'll be at Morrisville Community Park. The second half will be at Northwest Park. And then we'll do the first half in November at Cedar Fort Community Center. And then once we get past the, into winter, we'll be setting dates to be able to reestablish the courses. And we'll do that at Cedar Fort District Park, Cedar Fort Community Center, and then again at Cedar Fort District Park between late this year and summer of next year. So the specific dates will be coming out, but another good opportunity for our residents and others to try out disc golf or continue to enjoy disc golf.
And is there any way to have discs available for them, not just the basket?
I believe they're going to work on that.
Okay.
I'll defer to our staff at Parks and Rec, but I believe we'll have an answer for that as well.
Okay. That's wonderful. That's very exciting. Do, when will we receive the data of the usage of the pop-up?
I believe we are planning that for an upcoming meeting to have either an admin report or a short presentation on what that use looks like.
Excellent. Great. Any comments for Brandon on that?
Yeah, just, I'd be happy to give you some of my discs to use at the courses. I have some that I don't use anymore.
Thank you.
Okay. Excellent. Okay. Anything else from staff? Town Manager Page? Okay, great. So we have two closed sessions this evening to discuss the acquisition of real property and a personnel matter. We have no plans for any further public business after our closed sessions this evening. So at this time, we'd like to thank you for watching this meeting of the Morrisville Town Council. We hope you plan to join us again. Please feel free to email your town council members at towncouncil@townofmorrisville.org, or visit www.townofmorrisville.org/council for additional contact information. At this time, I'd ask for a motion to enter into our closed sessions.
Mayor and council, I will make one motion to move us into closed session pursuant to 143.318.11a5, a move that we go into closed session for the purposes of discussing a real property acquisition matter. And pursuant to 143.318.11a6, I move that we go into closed session to discuss a personnel matter.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries six zero. It is 7:11. We are in closed session. We're going to discontinue the feed. Now at item eight, administrative reports. There are three administrative reports tonight: quarterly capital projects update, a stormwater master plan and program evaluation report, and a fall advisory committee recruitment report. Administrative reports are provided as information-only items unless council has questions. Are there any questions on any of these items? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to, yes, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Fender, please.
I had a couple of questions on the stormwater.